I'm Mayor Kevin Smith. It's Monday, October the 4th, and this is a regular scheduled city council meeting. So I'm gonna call the meeting to war. Welcome, everybody. I want to welcome KGIW as usual, the Halmont West Halmont World, any other media that might be on and any guests. Any guests who might be on as well. So we've spent a lot of time waiting, so I'm gonna get right to it and ask Ms. Ramsey if you want to, or just ask the members if you've got a chance to read your minutes from September 21st. If you've got any questions, amendments, changes. If not, there's a motion to adopt the minutes. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from September 21st?
So I'm.
I'm tight says, I'm sorry, we haven't done the roll call, I don't think.
No.
It's because it's not on your agenda.
Oh, sorry.
I don't think. So anyway, pardon me. This, I knew something was wrong. Ms. Ramsey called row.
Davis.
Here.
Thank Columbia. Rocket. Franklin.
Here.
Etherly.
Yeah.
Forward. Smith.
Here.
Four present, three absent.
Okay, so where we left off, this Davis has made a motion that we adopt the minutes from September 21st. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Franklin, say us a motion. Any other questions or comments about the motion? It's not called row.
Davis.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Etherly.
Yes.
Forward. Crockett. Thank Columbia. Smith.
Uh, yes.
Four yes.
Motion passes, minutes adopted. So Mr. Turner is, I'll make sure, Mr. Turner, are you on? I'll see him on. So I think we passed them the treasures report. Let's see Ms. Ford logging on now. And then the. So. We have attached to your agenda, an update on the monies appropriated and spent from the Rescue Act funds to date. And Ms. Turner's on, I think it's, I think it would be a good idea, we talked about this, to just make this a regular attachment to our minutes, I mean, to our agenda as sort of a regular update. So anyway, that's in your packet. And I guess Ms. Ramsey, you know, or anybody really who can, if you have any questions, I want to look over that for a minute.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This is Chris Franklin. I only think it's fair that the treasurer, I don't know what's the reason, and it's not being rude, but we need him here to explain the finances to us and the public, you know? This is public money, and he should be here to explain what's going on, not you and Ms. Ramsey. He should do that. And I'm not trying to call anybody out. I just think that, you know, he needs to be here so we can get some questions answered. There's some things that you and Ms. Ramsey may not know that the treasurer would know. And I think that we need to hope, I mean, I'm fine with looking at the report. There's some things that we need to ask, and he's not here to ask them. I mean, I would like for him to be here so we can get some questions answered. That's just me, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't trying to speak out of turn. Just wanted him to be here. So it's only fair to us and the public that he be here. So we, as members of the council and as the general public, need to know what's going on with the finances.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Franklin. And certainly, you have a good point. Are there questions or comments about the report? Okay, one, that if anyone does have questions, we're down here. Also, when. To the next. And I think we've got some members. Mr. Valley, you're recognized.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. What issue? Yes.
No, I'm sorry. The next item on the agenda, priority item, request of the city attorney, discussion and action, approval of overtime for police department to carry female arrestees to facilities that has women, as our local jail does not.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been having the issue with district court, and I've talked to with the police chief. I did not visit with the mayor about it, but I came off and left a note with Ms. Halvand. I talked to Ms. Ramsey about it. Many of the female detainees, arrestees, are feeling like they are tough law in the sense of Phillips County Detention Center does not hold juveniles, nor does it hold females. And what we're doing is we're, the city is arresting people, and once they arrest them, they're there for a couple of hours, and then they're like, and particularly, we're talking females and juveniles. And talking to the chief about it, it creates an issue with our document, because in the issue that I have in city, if a woman is found guilty or something that would cause jail, or she has a bond that needs to be posted, basically, they're all being released if they have these, and many of them being arrogant and telling the officers, there's nothing that you can do. I'm gonna be back on the streets in a few minutes. The practical issue is, speaking with the chief, is that it entails overtime for us to take the ladies to Woodruff County, I believe, he's on the line as well, and be on. And so it's one of those things that we, that we constantly deal with, and that's one of the issues I wanted to bring to the city council's attention, because prosecutions, felony prosecutions, as you all know, where I only do misdemeanors. The district, the Todd Murray, Chuck Halvand, and Amy Boyd do the felony prosecutions. But arresting women is speculated that there are a handful of women who are doing a lot in this community who are constantly being released. And even when they're arrested and have a bond, they've been released without a bond because Phillips County is not holding female detainees or arrestees. So it requires, what the chief has told me, it would require overtime for personnel to be taken them as far as Woodruff County or beyond. So I wanted to address that as appropriation to the facts of law enforcement. And I invite the chief, with the mayor's consent, I'd invite the chief, if he don't mind, to further to speak on the issue, if he so chooses.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Valley. The simple fact is that we only have three counties that we can actually transport females, and that's Woodruff County, Cross County, and Lee County, who are actually taking our female detainees to these facilities. Along with that, the Phillips County Detention Center does do not hold juveniles as well. So we've taken juveniles as far as Little Rock, Arkansas, and also Pritton County. We've seen an increase of crimes that have been committed by juveniles and female detainees. And it's actually in the evening time where we actually have to transport these individuals. And if they have any type of mental condition or health condition, those officers have to sit with those individuals at the hospital until we find beds for those individuals. And we go as far as Little Rock, Arkansas. We've also went to Memphis, Tennessee, to just house them and take them to a mental facility. So with that being said, we've taken over average of two to three individuals a week actually transport those individuals to these locations of Woodruff, Cross, and Lee County. And sometimes if we have to sit with them at the hospital, we have to transport them after they are released from the hospital to locations like Little Rock, Arkansas, where they have a mental institution or institution to hold or house these individuals. So we've seen an increase due to the pandemic, and a lot of people have been in the house. There have been a lot of break-ins, have been a lot of drug arrests, and/or have someone who are having mental crises that we have to actually sit with them and also have those individuals being transported to facilities outside of Phillips County. So with that being said, it has, we have seen an increase of the overtime. We have seen an increase of arrestees that we've actually had to transport as well.
I had a question, Steve. I looked at the overtime for, it's overtime in district court. So are y'all using the court officers to do these, uh, drive outs? Because I'm seeing in district court, they had a significant amount of overtime. So are y'all using the court officer to transport?
Yes, sir. But due to the fact of the number of staff that we have on patrol, we try to keep our patrol officers on the street unless we have more than one individual that we have to transport. I spoke with the judge, Judge Carter, and what we're trying to do is utilize a certified court officer to do some of the workforce as transporting them and also standing by at the police station to give that service to the community as far as walk-ins and taking information. But on several occasions, we have actually had a court officer transport those individuals. If it's a female detainee, we actually send that court officer, if he's a male, and also send a female officer with that individual.
But Chief, do you, uh, why y'all doing that?
No one has notified, I mean, I don't know, the, let me slow down. The court officer is under the judge, and the judge can okay that, but have you ran it by the mayor? Because the overtime will be, that he or she is getting will be paid by what fund? And I think that if this officer, I mean, he's not a, they're not trained police officers. They're just.
They are trained. They are trained.
And they're putting the city in some kind of liability or something was to happen to these officers?
What's, what's, Mr. Franklin?
I'm just asking for general knowledge. I'm not jumping on anybody. I'm just asking, because I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
Okay, to answer your question, Mr. Franklin, this is Chief Smith again. Yes, that court officer has over 200 hours of law enforcement training before they even become court officers. So you have 200 hours of law enforcement training, which is the equivalent of a part-time officer. So they are certified as law enforcement officers because they get the same training that we have. And they also have the eight to 40 hours court training as well. So they are trained to be able to do that. As I said in the beginning, this is something that I went through the judge with, Judge Carter, about it. I've also spoken with the mayor about it, and I've also made Mr. Valley, our city attorney, aware of that as well. But he, that individual is not the only individual whom transport these detainees out of the county itself.
In addition, Mr. Franklin, if I may address the legal part of your question. The opinion that I gave is that the court staff, except for the police officers, were under the judge's auspices. I had given the opinion that they still were cert, sort of, need to be certified officers from the police department. And we requested an opinion from Mr. League about that. Well, Judge Carter asked, and I requested an opinion about it. And they have not given an opinion at this point, but I'm pretty strong in my belief that they are still law enforcement officers. Those two court officers work for this, the city, and they're under the direct direction of the chief of police as relates to it. And they're just doing the court hours. They're there to keep order and peace in his state in court. And so when they're not in court, they should be responsive to him. And that's the legal opinion that I gave the mayor and the judge and the chief. And we've met about this several times. And so the overtime is related to the actual work relating to things that the chief of police has given him direction to do. And he, he and the judge have been speaking back and forth, because the judge just want a clear answer from the Miss League, and then he's done with it. But it's been my opinion. And I think the mayor and the chief agree with my opinion that they are city police officers and doing court hours. They're there to maintain order in the court and to make sure that they carry out the instructions of the judge during those hours. And after that, they are to report to the chief of police to do, generally do this as the police officer. And that's what that particular office has been doing, and that's part of the overtime that you see. The chief briefed me on it. He told the judge about it as well, and I believe he and the mayor had had several conversations about it. I can't speak to that other than the chief had told me that portion, but I know the chief has talked to me about this numerous times.
Okay, with the finance part, does the money come out of the courts or the police department? For what, to pay the overtime, what does those finances come out of? Does it come out of the general fund? Does it come out of district court fund? I mean, so we can keep the money.
It should be, all of it should be general funds, because during the court officers, they're just there to maintain order. They are police officers who are certified law enforcement officers through the agency. And the agency is the Halmont West Halmont Police Department. They work for the Halmont West Halmont Police Department. And so they repay just like every other Halmont West Halmont police officer. So it should be coming out of general funds, not court funds.
I have a question. This is Ever Jane. Chief, good evening. Out, what's your estimated cost of overtime for transportation for at least, you said, two to three persons per week, per two weeks? Do you have just a general estimate?
A general estimate per month is about $5,600 per month that we're spending just on the transport of female and juvenile detainees to other counties.
What would your perspective be on hiring, if we could find one, a part-time transport officer?
Well, I don't, I don't have any, any beliefs that we can, we can actually hire a transport person. But as Mr. Valley had said, is that we already have a court officer who only keeps the peace during the day in the courts, and then their officially duties come back to the police department. So we have not actually thought about hiring a transport person L, because we're still trying to get officers hired for the department itself. So that is something that we can look into as far as trying to hire someone to transport. But the sense of the matter is that we're still trying to get our compliment for officers, our staff, for full-time officers, and also give a competitive edge on keeping our retaining officers that we already have. We don't have a problem for is getting someone within the department to do the job is just the cost itself and how much it's costing us because the Phillips County Detention Center do not hold females nor juveniles.
Right, and I understand that, and I really sympathize, because there is a, it's difficult to.
Yes, ma'am.
Get someone hired. Now, I was just wondering, a part-time person may be able to transport when needed? You know, could during the day and night. I just wanted your view on it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So, Mr. Valley, what you're asking for the council as far as an action is an approval by overtime?
I didn't have an amount estimation to approve overtime. I just wanted to bring the issue, because Mr. Turner, two council meetings ago, talked about how there need to be additional funds appropriated for the police department. And one is about it, and speaking to the chief about it, and and my personal experience as city attorney, we've got, I was actually appropriate some money so we can continue to house, to transport and house police officers. The chief believes that he's spending $5,600 a month. I don't know what additionally has, the chief could speak more to budget than I can, but I just was trying to identify the issue, because everyone wants to turn the typically on the line that he would, he would tell the council where we are. And because we're having two or three miscreants who are continuing to behave the way they are, that a female, it's becoming a problem. There's one in particular who's taking Catholic orders from things, and the lady's been gassed from different. Et cetera. And it's just a general, for you, confidence that they are not going to stay rated long or they're not have to pay a bond, because Phillips County is not going to hold them.
Do we want to? Mr. Turner, do we have a figure we can move forward with?
I would defer to the chief on this. I don't have a figure. I just was bringing, raising the issue as practical problem that's resulting in the lack of overtime appropriation.
If you got, do you have a title number in mind? We want to get Mr. Turner. I was talking to the chief. If he had a title number in mind, or that you talked to Mr. Turner about it, do we, we want to wait until the next meeting and get something written up on it?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good thing, Mayor. We do have the figures. It's pretty much running us about $5,600. And that's not in cloud counting fuel, the mileage on the vehicles of taking those individuals to these different outside counties as well. But based off the numbers that I have, it was, we roughly every month is spending $5,600 to almost $7,000 a month in overtime, just trying to get individuals housed in certain areas. And if that individual suffers from a mental illness, and we're looking for a bed for that individual, that officer, I've had times where I had to actually call officers in to just sit with an individual at the hospital and to pass for paramedics, transport that individual to that facility. And that officer literally has to ride with Pass for to that location, and they bring them back. And that can last up to, I've seen from eight hours to 16 hours. And we had to, when it go into 16 hours, that's two officers that we try to split it up with and to try to keep some type of rest for that officer and being fair on giving out the overtime for those individuals who want it as well. But we're looking at between $5,600 to $7,000 a month, just in overtime for that. And that's not including any other incident that we may have occurred or any investigation that we forget a homicide, robbery, or some serious incident where we actually had to call other officers in, such as a standoff. And we've had to do that as well. And with that, we go to a level one. And with level one, hey, everybody pretty much had to come in, and that could last. And like this last standoff, we had about 14 hours. So we had to pretty much bring the whole force out. So those incidentals, along with the transport of these females and juveniles, we've seen a tremendous increase.
Thanks, Chief. What, if there's an objection, why don't we move this until the next agenda, Ms. Ramsey? And to Ms. Ford's point, you know, we'll explore if there, yeah, I think to make sure people understand, you have to have a certified law, it's my understanding, you have to have a certified law enforcement officer to accompany the person. And we have a lot of mental health folks in the, in this city. And it can sometimes be a pretty long wait. And people wonder why the police is involved in that, mental health. Mental health folks don't want to be involved, because they have, they're dangerous usually by the time we get involved, which is almost every time, it seems like sometime, once a week. So there are certain laws we have to go by. So there, we'll look at those alternatives. I think we probably already looked at them, but we'll flesh them out a little bit and get with Mr. Turner and come back. Is that okay, Mr. Valley, or anybody else?
That's fine with me.
We'll do that, and then hang on, Chief, because we got some other stuff coming. And, you know, we got a late start, so I'm gonna try to move as far as I can. Ms. Davis, we've had this on the agenda several times, so we're gonna move on to about abandoned vacant block properties. So we'll stop, we'll just stop there. And Ms. Davis, see how many things you want to say?
Mayor, I'm not gonna speak long on it. I feel like sometimes when I bring it up, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse. But everybody knows that I care about the beautification of our city. And this is an issue that's been going on for a long time. There are several that are in this ward, vacant houses, burnt structures, West Side School is another one, and the duplexes. When I was growing up, they used to be called ATM houses. I'm not sure exactly who owns them now, but they're still there. And I've received calls, I see people out, emails, people complaining. It doesn't seem like it's moving or we're doing enough as far as what the city is responsible for doing for our constituents. And I just wanted to bring it up again and address it. I know that you all sent out a list of some houses that would be condemned. I'm not exactly sure where we are on that, but I just, I, me personally, I don't feel like we're doing enough. I mean, I've been on this council for a while, and I know this was an issue before I got on the council, but it is, it has become a bigger issue. And I take it to heart. I do, as far as passing by structures that are covered in grass or passing by structures that have debris in the yards. Or I've even had people that say that, you know, somebody's living in or somebody that, that came out of that house. Or, you know, I, I mean, that's just, I just take it to heart. I wouldn't want to live next to that. I wouldn't. And I'm sure that the other constituents of this great city don't want to, you know, suffer through that either. But I would like for our city attorney to kind of speak on our responsibility and our obligation as a city and what we can do and what we can't do.
Thank you, fellow city attorney. Our responsibility is, is, as part of it, is to maintain the city to make sure it's clean and sanitary and to do so in an orderly and legal way. Part of the issue, what is going to happen, at this point, you have one code enforcement officer. You had to, the procedure for his condemnation and removing those things, there are several different ways to approach it. One of the primary ways that we've traditionally approached this condemnation, you've gone through, and we've identified several times the issue that you still have to work off the old, clean those up. I don't know what the status of that was. That goes to the sanitation department for them to begin to work on those as relates to new structures that need to be condemned. The code enforcement has to go letters to each homeowner, absentee homeowner, et cetera. And then after those notices have come back, then they were for defamation office. I currently have very few on my desk relating to these code enforcement, I mean, condemnations. And so I think that has to be more than, I think there are so many issues that going on. The code enforcement is going here, there, here, there, here, there, and many, many days, code enforcement is putting out fires all day long. And so part of the issue is for the council to consider is whether you need an additional code enforcement officer. You're in the process of going back and hiring another. But code enforcement is a very involved job. They administer us to need to be condemned, and I'm available to work with either one of the code enforcement officers. We currently just have one. But that's part of the process. Now, another process, the chief and I have talked about several times, is when we have habitual crimes at a place that we can go through, and I can file a lawsuit to do that, and all that is just a matter of, has to be a certain number. I think it's three or more crimes at a felony level or drug level before we can go in and execute that. Uh, before we can go in and, and execute that uh uh to go in and ask a court to uh declare public nuisance. And once we do that. Uh, then we can go forward and the city will have responsibility for their property during the, the time. Uh, part of the things that's been happening also is for his crime. Crime dispersed once you put the sky cops there. I'm sure the chief will speak to that later. Because some of the areas where you put the sky cops, the move on a, a area. Before the dilapidated buildings, uh, we have to work diligently and systematically begin to identify. Uh, block by block, the structures we're going to look at and go for and get it done. You had a hi- historical issue of equipment and that's one, one of the main things that. The city has been wrestling with for the past few years is the equipment, the dump trucks and et cetera, because we had the uh. The Walton Foundation Grant was for the city and it kind of worked together in a local agreement. You got several properties torn down. And now some other properties that, that are currently being torn down that are not based on condemnation, but uh. There are so many properties, it's gonna take a while to do it, but I'm here and I'm available to, to go forward and get it done as many as possible. And to work with code enforcement, the mayor and the city council to, to get it done.
Ms. Davis, you want, you have a follow up or anything? Uh, I'll say this really quickly.
Yeah, you lost.
I'll, I'll, I'll waste a little time and, and see if she gets back on, but um. We, chief, I think we've basically removed squatters from two houses, one last night and another one this morning. Um, we, we cited them, we had dog issues. Um. But my, my, my favorite statistic is this one. Last year, we knocked down about fifty houses, cleaned up about fifty houses. We had over a hundred single vacant homes burned. Think about that a minute. Think about that. Over a hundred burn. It takes about a week on average, some more than longer, some less. And with bad weather, that's not bad. Uh, and Mr. Jones likes to say it's more than he's ever seen since he's worked for the city. Um, we've done that on average, count the Walton Grant about every year, but every year we've lost more houses to. Uh, fires than we have been able to clean up. So when that house is cleaned up and that lot's cleaned up, you don't notice it after a week or two. You only notice the one next to it. And we have hundreds. Um, the rest, that's also true. We're, we should have. Well, we're, we're trying to get a dump truck and we, we will have the equipment, I'd say by the end of the year. Which uh we've been trying to get for many years, Mayor. Um, that will make a huge difference. Huge difference. Uh, we are advertising for openings in the code department. I think that'll make a big difference. Um, when they're, when they're filled, uh, we have to fill them, not just advertise for them and it has to be filled with people on the job. Um. So really a lot, lot in this subject. But that, those are some of my favorite statistics, I guess, is, and I would ask the council to consider. An aggressive um arson investigation effort in our city. That includes law enforcement certified arson investigators. And um I've talked with three fire chiefs now about that. Uh, and, and, and the police chief and um in my judgment, those fires. Uh, legal or not, or in between, I mean, I think they can, we have caught people with arson, but they're generally people that are. Small players, you know, um. And we need a much more aggressive effort to go against, yes, people that might be guilty of, of big, big time arson, I think here. Uh, for the first time in a long, long time, but that's gonna take the city council's full support. Um, otherwise, we're gonna keep losing more houses, fires than we can knock down and clean up. You know, this is math basically at that point. Has Ms. Davis got my comment yet? I won't say her, but go ahead, Mr. Franklin.
Uh, man, I, I agree with Ms. Davis. I agree with you both, but uh this is the thing. Once the house are torn down, see, this is the part that we have, even if you look at the census report, people wanna come to hell. But people are burning down houses. Okay, you burn down a house, what happens? If, if it's arson, what happens? Nothing is really happening. So people keep burning down these houses in this community because nothing's gonna happen to them. You, you, you're in insurance business, you, you, you know, uh, you have to pay out some, you know, you have to pay out some claims. But when you run a house down, what kind of investigation is done? Then after the investigation is over with, uh, or, or what these people get paid, there's money set aside for these, when they, when these people burn this house. To tear down the structure. They don't do that. The, I, I, the house that burned over here by me, I asked the lady, she's uh. As a adjustment, is that, that's hey, by this house being burned, uh, is there money to, for demo? He said, yes, a lot of people don't even ask for. They need, what, once they get the money for the dwelling and the contest, they're done. Watch this. Even we got a lot of foreclosure homes here in Helena, West Helena, that we should be trying to, you know, promote held it. Yeah, we, as Ms. Davis said, a part over there by her is not being developed. It's a lot of things that we have to try to do together. I know we need a code enforcement. I know we need all these things, but. We have to start holding some, some, some homeowners accountable. We have to start holding people accountable for their property. Even if they're not living here, see if they're selling. We should be trying to work on a plan to, to get houses built here. There has been, there, there, there's a couple of new homes being built in, in Helena, in Helena. But we need more homes going up. As many of it burns up, we need more to come up. So people can get out of the projects, get used to owning the home, even with rent the home, renting the houses. I'm sorry about that. Even rent the house, people who rent houses don't typically take care of theirs because they ain't there. So we need to try to find a way, give USDA, uh, some rule development with somebody to see how can we start building new homes. Get people out of the projects into being homeowners. That's the only way you gonna stop the burn down and the, the, the dilapidated houses. We have, we as, as, as members of city government have to get out here and work together and see what's available for us to do. To make this community better because they will keep burning down. They burn them down, they move away from hell, they leave a structure for. Whoever has to deal with. So we have to try to work on a plan. We have to, with, with the fire being done, we can, we can get a fire marshal, somebody here to investigate the fire. See what the cause of the fire is, if it's arson, hey.
If I can, I, I wanna stop right there because you mentioned, you mentioned fire marshal. I agree with that and, and that's what I, I'd like to see us consider as a fire marshal. The, that's how we have state fire marshal. We only come in if there's a death involved. Um, what we need is a local fire marshal who can um have. Police credentials as well as fire who can go in and investigate. We have some firemen who have. Um, we have some firemen have those credentials uh on the fire, fire department side, but not on the. Police department side, uh, and they wanna, would be paid more for that. Uh, if y'all are interested. Come back to you with a fire marshal plan. Um, Chief Smith wanted to speak on that, so I'm gonna give you a minute. If you don't mind, Mr. Franklin, is that okay? I, I interrupt the Mr. Franklin, so is that okay with you, Mr. Franklin? Chief Smith, he wanted to speak to that.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Franklin, great, great question. Um, when, when there is a fire arson and we've actually. Uh, apprehended and have went through the system of prosecute this individual. But when you get a fire, like the mayor was saying, automatically the fire department, because of their training. They actually, because arson investigation is totally different than a homicide. Uh, it's very tedious. It takes a lot of training and I'm talking about months of training to get that certification. And when we have an incident where we find that a person and a lot of the vagrants. That's in these homes and they're trying to, in the winter time, they're trying to stay uh warm, they normally set fires to these houses. But in the summertime, like you said, we found that when we call the state fire marshal. We also notify them along with the fire chief. They do their initial report and they say, hey, this is arson. It goes from there to contacting the insurance company to tell them that this fire, it may be foul play. We may have to investigate it a little bit more. So the fire department, police department works along with the state police. And then if we find the individual who may have set the fire and like you said, like the mayor said, sometimes it's small players. But the major people you just don't ever get. And we send it to the prosecution and, and the prosecutors say, hey, we may have enough evidence or whatever. And we may be able to move forth in the arson investigation. But the problem is, and Chief Brown, myself, the mayor, and even the city attorney have made some. Made some moves on it and talked about it, but is to actually have these people go to Alita. That's the Arkansas Law Enforcement Training Academy to get the certification. And I mean, the certification is very tedious because you have to know the fire side. Of their training and also you have to know the criminal or what we say criminal investigation side and also get the certification as well. And individuals that wanna participate that in that. That would be something that the council say, just like Ms. Ford say, hey, about transport person. I would like to see two individuals certified in the Helena, West Helena Police Department and two individuals certified in the fire. Department as well, because we've seen an increase of homes burned, especially in the summertime, right after. Pretty much when the income taxes is all over or nearly, near the fall area sometime in the winter time. So. The thing is, is getting individuals certified, getting these outside entities to come in and help, which they have helped on. Uh, state fire marshal has helped us on several investigations. And just actually putting it together with code enforcement. Uh, to come down there to do their part in the streets and sanitation, just having a team of individuals like Mr. Valley had said. In regards to the nuisance abatement team. And we tried to start that back in twenty eighteen, but we had a problem with the filing part of it. And getting an environmental judge or someone to take a hand of that. North Little Rock, for, for example, they have a nuisance abatement team. And we actually brought someone down back in twenty eighteen to really go over the, the laws. To go over the details of having a nuisance abatement team, but I would like to see more community involvement. And listening to the constituents in your areas and along with the co- uh city council. To try to help us do this. And we have a lot of volunteers that would like to help us with this, but for as the arson. We are just so behind a ball right now because of the certification and the prosecution side of getting these cases prosecuted. That we pretty much got our heads tied behind our backs, if that answered your question.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes, uh, Mayor, I, uh, chief, I, I, this is all I can say, that if something we should do. Uh, how, how about this? How many? That you have right there?
At this current time, we have seventeen officers.
Okay, and you asked for how many, how many did you ask for, you asked for?
We asked for, in the last meeting, we asked for approximately six officers.
Okay, so have you, so if you ask for though, maybe officers, you can't seem to get them. Why don't you try to use some of those slots you got to hire two environmental officers? To see if you get somebody trained or, or, or see if you can throw it out there. Or if that's the case, you know, if you say you need that many officers. See how you can, if, if, if you and America City have agreed to cut a couple of officers. To raise some salaries, to hire some indivi- some uh. Environmental officers and also give your people who are in, who are on the streets now a raise if you can figure out how you can. Say, hey, we can get by with these many officers. If we pay these people right, we also get two individual officers, uh, two uh. Environmental officers at the same time. Look, look at your budget, look at what you're asking for, because I don't think that your budget for like one point three. You, by the end of the year, you are only being spent eight hundred thousand dollars by the end of the year. The, the way the budget looks, you all won't even be, have spent. Thousand dollars, I think we got one point three, if I'm not mistaken. So you can look at that to see how can you say, look, I can give a cut, I give. Uh, patrol a raise, I can get these people raised and also get uh the environmental officers. With saying, hey, maybe I could go back to twenty officers and get two or, two environmental officers and get, get the police department raises. In that order to see how you can keep good competitive officers here. That's just my suggestion, because with the fire department, we can come back. We can get with the, with the fire chief and see what we can do for him. But right now, to see if we can make the load lighter and better to get the bow, the bar rolling. With, hey, you, you know, can we cut a couple of officers, uh, give, you know, use some of that money to go back into the budget as a raise. Find some uh two environmental officers to work for the city at a decent pay. This is something new to the council and the mayor. I, I'm pretty sure you and the mayor have been working on it, but that would at least let people know, okay. They, they, they could get on top of it. They could have started investigating these fires. We could deal with the fire department with the chief's brown come to us. But I hope I'm making sense to you what I'm saying and I hope that, that's something that you will be, you and America City have talked to and look and see if y'all can work with that.
It was fine. Let, let me, let me, Chief Smith, hold on a second. We have yet to accomplish any business, so. That's a great discussion. Let's pick that up and we get to uh, see Mr. Psych Columbia is joining us. And Ms. Davis is back. Let's, let's pick that up and we get to the issue of incentives. And if we could um move on now, because we are on a time constraint. Uh, to the annual milage ordinance and I don't know, Ms. Ramsey or Mr. Valley, either one, if you wanna address that, but it's a, this is something we do every year. Uh, we have to do about law, but Ms. Ramsey, Mr. Valley, either one, you wanna address it?
Uh, yes. Mil- milage orders, orders we pass every year. In order to be able to collect on the millet, I think Ms. Ramsey has a copy of it. Uh, but it's the standard one, the same language every year, because we haven't increased that millet and this is not an increase. It's, but it has to be passed in order for it uh us to be able to collect. And so uh, Ms. Ramsey, what order come with this?
Thirty-one. And the council.
Same thing we do every year.
Yes, sir. It has to be a, a most suspended rule placed on third and final read, reading the title only.
Mr. Psych Columbia, we uh, we're in the summer thirty-one, third. Final ratings, excuse me, is there a second? Mr. Franklin, take us a motion. Any other questions or comments about the motion? If not, call the room.
Davis?
Yes.
Thank Columbia?
Yes.
Rocket? Franklin?
Yes.
Etherly? Forward?
Yes.
Uh, Etherly? Rocket? For yes to offline.
Can you read the title of that ordinance, please?
An ordinance levying taxes on the real and personal property located within the city limits of Helena, West Helena, Arkansas. Based upon the twenty twenty assessment to defray general expenses.
And there needs to be a motion to adopt this.
I shall move.
Mayor, Mr. Psych Columbia's final adoption, we're in summer thirty-one. Um, I think that was Mr. Franklin's second motion. Any uh comments or questions about the motion? If not, call the room.
Etherly? Forward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Rocket? Franklin?
Yeah.
Thank Columbia?
Yes.
For yes to offline.
Ms. Valley, do we have to do anything on this particular ordinance? There's no emergency clause.
I know, no, we just, we just published it and get it to list the kind of clerk.
Our motion passes, uh, thank you very much. Uh, the next item is the ordinance wave admitting on the body camera proposal, uh, ordinance and cost information to pay it. Uh, and, and I'll go first now, I see Chief Smith. So. Let me brief, this is a more modern, uh, body camera system. Uh, it's one, it's automatic, it doesn't not, uh, matter. The, the officer who's wearing it does not have any control over. Uh, when it's, when it's filming, when it's not. And, uh, Chief Smith, I'm gonna let you, I'm just gonna let you take it from there. It's a, it's a lot more sophisticated system. Uh, and in the, uh, it will require a waiver on bidding and, um, and approval for appropriation. But Chief, you want to take, take it from there?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Uh, our current system, we've had questions about our current system. Our current system was actually purchased back in twenty, late twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Uh, the problem is, is that we've had officers who by policy is supposed to check. Their, the proper operation of that piece of equipment before and after work and actually download it. Now, the downloading side is that we have a server that actually Mr. Trevor Seams put in that was purchased with the old, um, equipment. And, but the wear and tear of the equipment itself. The constant trying to download it, they're not downloaded on a ti- on a timely manner. Where the, the system actually crashed because they have too many incidents or events on that body cam. Uh, with this new system through the Exxon Enterprise, Exxon Enterprise has been around for several years. Uh, more modernized, uh, stationary type of equipment for law enforcement officers. Which everything is pretty much is cloud based. We've had problems with prosecution, DUIs, uh, different type of incidents where officers are unable to ta- pull. Take that information and download it. Uh, we do have a cloud base on the previous one. But because of the system and because of the server, we're unable to put as much information on that server that it actually can hold. So with the Exxon system is, is more up to date, more modernized. The city in the initial cost of the, um, body cams would be one cost. However, we're paying for the service of the cloud base. So say for instance, the, uh, Mr. Valley, he's a prosecutor in district court. He wants to go into the cloud and pull down information with Chief Smith with a DUI. They can actually go there and pull that, access that information or that video at any time. So what we actually paying for is the technology side is very sophisticated. It also alerts if we have an officer, uh, injured. Uh, it also alerts us to know where our officers are as, as well for its GPS tracking. And also in this package, the hardware part is, and this is where we've been having problems is. If an officer damaged or in, in, in the line of duty, they damaged that equipment, all the, only thing we have to do is send the equipment in. We get the free equipment. We get equipment right back to us, uh, within weeks. And the city do not have the cost, pay any cost for that. Also with the new cars that we have, we have a three hundred and sixty degree camera system that's in there. In these new cars that it will be integrated with our Exxon system. So say for instance, officer pulls over someone on a traffic stop. As soon as he or she activates their police lights, that body cam automatically come on. And we've had problems with officers not turning their body cam on at a time when they make any type of, uh, on duty. Interaction with any citizen. So it's given transparency on both sides, making sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to do at a timely manner. With the Exxon system, it would cost the city approximately, uh, with tax, a hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars. That money you don't have to pay upfront. Only thing is broken down in a five-year contract. The city would be, if we vote on it, if the city council approves it. The first payment will come out November of next month of twenty twenty-one would be thirty-two thousand five hundred and fifth and. Three, thirty-two thousand five hundred and five dollars and thirty-four cents. Each year, when the budget is approved, a line item for his equipment would be actually of that amount. Uh, plus or minus, uh, any other equipment. So actually, for the total cost, do not, we don't have to come upfront with that. Uh, it would be broken down in actually five payments over a sixty-month, uh, period. Of, of the price at which I said thirty-two thousand five hundred and five dollars and thirty-four cents. So this company is throughout the United States, all, uh, police departments are using, using it because of the storage. The storage, that's the biggest problem, storing events and information into a survey, it pretty much comes to the point where it crashes. But all of this will be on a server that is accessed. Uh, we can access it at any moment. Also, the safety, uh, capability, uh, on these, uh, recorders as well. Is if an officer fires his weapon or near fire, somebody fire weapon at that officer, that camera automatically comes on. So it's very sensitive, is, it's a good tool. Uh, it's something that we don't have to worry about for us constantly buying new body cams because they was broken, water damage or anything like that. If something happens to it, we can automatically send it back to, uh, Exxon Enterprise, they'll send us a new one. But the main thing for prosecution and for evidence purpose. All this information on that body cam will automatically go into a cloud-based system rather than just going into a server. So, for instance, officers, other than checking based off our policy and procedure and beginning of their tour duty. They have to see and notify our supervisor if there's any malfunctions, they can't download the, the body cam. They really don't have to do anything because the company itself keeps all of the data. It automatically download at the end of their shift. And it was pretty much nothing but checks and balances when it comes to court prosecution. Or we need to review it because of some, uh, misconduct or something like that. Uh, with that being said, do anyone have any questions?
I, I have a question. I, it's a four-year proposed payment plan. Uh, what about, what about upgrade on technology, uh, if it changes or, or, or will Exxon, uh, pay for that?
Yes, ma'am, all their technology, uh, they've been, I've, I've actually used Exxon probably about ten years now in another department. And with their technology and everything, when it, when they change, we change. There's no extra cost, no extra fees or anything like that. Uh, they pretty much understand most departments have budget problems and, and funding. So instead of just coming up with one payment, they break the payments down to a five-year plan, uh, sixty months. And any upgrades, any new technology that they implemented to their product, the city do not have to pay for that, that's automatic.
Kay, you're very good with, uh, grants and, uh, getting other funding. Is there anything, uh, out there for this?
Yes, ma'am, uh, Exxon right now has given us pretty much, they have a grant program. We're actually on the bundle savings right now, and you can see it on the front page if you have this document which was sent out to everyone, hopefully. We've also, they've cut off twenty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty cents. That they've given us a savings, that is a initial grant type of, uh, bundle savings that they've already gave the city. I know back, uh, when we first did our budget for twenty twenty-one back in February. Uh, myself and Mr. Turner and the bear, we spoke on this. Uh, the mayor and I have had several Zoom meetings with the company. To, to get the verification on the numbers because that's the one most important thing. But also the most important thing is the preservation of life for officers and our civilians and making sure that everybody's doing the right thing. So the main thing is that we wanted to look at something that was gonna be affordable. It's not gonna be a downgrade because the ones that we got now, I actually obtained a, a grant. To pay for those and we had some money left over in the grant, we were able to obtain those. But there are nothing pretty much like this, and I mean, this is bringing up us up to speed on modern day type technology by going to this system. But to answer your question, they've already given us pretty much about twenty-seven thousand dollars off top of the total price of everything. But we can review and look at some USD rural grants or something like that.
And, uh, Chief, that was what I was speaking of, I did see this on here, but you have been so resourceful, I didn't know if there was DOJ. You, you know, other entities out there.
Yes, ma'am.
What I was speaking to.
Yes, ma'am, but like the main thing that I, I wanted to tell Ms. Ford, um. We're, we're at a, a crunch time when it comes to monies and, and we want to make sure. That we have the best equipment out there for our officers. And there are so many different stories that I could tell you about situations that our officers been in. That they jump out the car, they don't turn the body cams on. We just want to make sure that our officers are safe and they're doing what they're supposed to do. And also the public, letting the public know that, hey, we're watching as well. And this is a great system. Because like I said, all the hardware, it integrates with our new camera system in our vehicles. That the, the city council have voted on for us to be able to get. So it's no excuse of not turning your body cam on because, uh, big brother in the sky is always gonna watch. So that's pretty much what I have to say about that. But we've already got a tremendous savings on it and we could look at other grants to help out on this, uh, after the initial cost. So that's not gonna be a problem.
Other, other questions?
Chief, Andre Valas. Uh, Chief, most of the year you and I have been talking about, uh, uh, because of we have less of the human capital. That you were going to make investments in, in your department relating to, uh, equipment and upgrades and all that.
Yes, sir.
And today we also met about the budget, when we was trying to get a report a couple of months ago, you were eight hundred thousand dollar budget, but. He projected you'd be spending less five hundred thousand dollars on. The actual budget. And you, you wanted to talk about the, uh, how this impacts your budget, uh, and this being the budget neutrality of this and.
Yeah.
Finding you of that.
Yeah, so we, we was allocated about eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we hadn't, we've only spent probably three hundred thousand dollars or less, so there is. What we're doing is allocating money that was already there because of human capital. That we, we hadn't hired anybody or anything like that, we were just using that money that was left there allocated back over into equipment. I think that's the biggest thing, so when you're saying, uh, budget neutral, that's pretty much what it is, is that we're actually taking monies. That are, we already have in our budget to upgrade our equipment. And get things that's within the department to make our officers have a safer and better environment. Where they can be able to do their job, so that's another thing that we looked at as well. So Ms. Ford, we're really trying to utilize the monies that we've had left over. Because of not hiring, or not being able to hire individuals and some of that money was, that was allocated. For these promotions and taking some of those positions. We wanted to utilize that money to use it for his equipment and upgrades on equipment into the police park.
And, and I agree, and I think that, that, that's real good, Chief, you know, we've talked about all the sky cops that you want or whatever, and, and you are. Uh, so I, you know, I just, I, I, I think that's good, I, I'm just asking because I know that there are other things that you wanted for the department also.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Yeah, and we're gonna talk about that if we get to it, um, so in, in the interest of time, and we, we can stay on this. Um, but if, if we have any more questions at time, if not, is there a, uh, is there a motion to. Wait for the ordinance on wait bidding, which is ordinance number thirty-two?
Hey, man, I just had a quick question, uh, you know, I, 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 I'll, uh, so, I'll so move on to the motion, but I have a question though. Uh, since I, I'm, I heard the chief use the, uh, word budget neutral. Well, with, with, that's what I tried to say earlier, with the monies that we have not used, but we also in the budget, if we use this money. Or if we use it, we go ahead and, uh, do a, do a, some of the budget to show this is what's already been spent. So when, when it, when it comes to the end of the year, we're, hey, we didn't hire these, we didn't hire the rest of these officers because we decided to get sky cam, this and this. And have the bu- take their money out, as Mr. Mr. Say Columbia always said, amend the budget, we go back to the mid, say, hey, we, we took these officers out. Add this to equipment so we can know still in the police department where we are financially. Does it make sense what I'm saying to, 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 to go ahead and change that if we go?
Yes, yes, sir, I'm trying, Andre Valas. You're making perfect sense, and I talked to Chief about that today. Because when, when it's trying to, two weeks, uh, two meetings ago, said that there would be about a three hundred thousand dollar left. The police department for was the salary, not the overtime, we just talked about the eight hundred thousand dollars appropriated. And what the chief was doing, he met with me about today was taking some of that money and reallocating it for this and for other things like the, the, uh, he talked to me also about. The jail, the equipment that he's desiring, et cetera, to use parts of that. And November thirteenth to be testing and then, after then, January budget, we can go back to things, but while. We're in this position where you had less officers, he has, he has expressed to me that his intent was to, we. Go ahead and get all the equipment we need, that we can afford and remain budget neutrality. And other things we could afford to do, let's do those too, so when we start January, hopefully you have promotions and a fresh start. I'm not trying to speak for the chief, but that's part of what we discussed, uh, based to her.
Okay, uh, that, that was my main thing, and that's why I, Mr. Turner was here. So, you know, we could get this, I mean, I'm for it, but I just want to make sure. That, you know, when, when it comes to, we, we know where the money went. So what, so Chief, what are you gonna do about it? So you, you, you sure that you got the officer that you need before we do this, you sure?
Uh, I didn't hear you, Mr. Franklin, can you repeat that?
Are you sure that, are you sure that we have enough officers right there for this fiscal year to go ahead and do what you want us to do there? Are you sure we got it there, so we can move forward with what you're asking for tonight?
Well, I'm not trying to be funny, Mr. Franklin, you can never have enough, I wish I had thirty or forty officers, but we don't. Uh, it, it's one of those things, I don't mean, uh, just go sideways with it, it's quantity over quality. Uh, do we want to just hire a bunch of people and, and, and fill vacant positions? And then we may have problems down the way, or do we want qualified individuals who want to do a career rather than a job? So with, we've had several applications, unfortunately. When we do background checks and, and look at their, uh, background history, they can't make the qualifications. And that's one of our biggest problems. And that's something we're gonna probably talk about when we talk about incentives of recruiting and retention. And giving these incentives to, like, as you said several times, to bring individuals here and keep those great officers that we have. And working with them and working with professional development plans for them. Where, uh, I walk out, we can hire within, we have your next chief of police, so. That's one of the biggest things that we're looking at, you know, is trying to see what we got, take our resources and make the best of it. So to actually answer your question, we actually have seventeen officers currently. Uh, we've had, actually, we asked the council for six. On the last meeting, couple of meetings we had, uh, we actually can use eight to ten officers. That's part-time, no, excuse me, not part-time, but entry level and certified. And we've also looked at some auxiliary positions. Uh, that's something totally different, but having that staff and also we may have to look at hiring, uh, part-time. Uh, that's something totally different, but having that staff and also we may have to look at hiring uh part-time officers as well. So we have to look at all those facets, but right now, what we actually need. Is to try to get the most uh uh bang for our buck is getting more equipment. Uh, getting the things that's gonna bring our police department up to a twenty first century police department. And to also recruit and promote our in our officers within the department. So I think. Right now, we probably need eight to ten officers now. But in the meantime, there is equipment that is much needed. And is is a dying need because we need this equipment for our day-to-day operation. So that's where we're at now.
If that is. Mr. Franklin, let let, yeah, let let me stop. I'm trying to keep us on track as best we can. Uh, is your motion on the floor?
Yes, sir.
Second. Mr. Davis. Yeah.
Then the rules. By law, and I believe Mr. Franklin said, most and then Ms. Davis said second. Sorry, man.
No, no, no. Thanks for, thanks for correction. Any other questions or comments about the motion to put it on third and final reading, ordinance number thirty two? If not, call the room.
Davis?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Crockett? Franklin?
Yes.
Etherly?
Abstain.
Forward?
Yes.
I have four, yes, one abstention, one absent.
You can. Mr. Valley, right, for the. Um, okay, is there, um, so the motion passed, put it on third and final reading. Uh, ordinance number thirty two, twenty twenty one, and ordinance waving competitive bidding in accordance with our code annotated. Two fourteen fifty eight, three oh three, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase certain property for the city of Harlem, West Harlem and for other related purposes. Is there a motion for final passage?
I saw. Uh, who who's, I didn't hear, I'm sorry. Who was that? Ms. Franklin?
Mr. St. Columbia made a motion, Mr. Franklin seconded.
Okay. Mr. St. Columbia made a move, a final motion of ordinance number thirty two, twenty twenty one. Mr. Franklin seconded the motion. Any questions or comments about the motion? If not, call the room.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Crockett? Davis?
Yes.
Forward? Yes. Etherly?
Abstain.
I have four, yes, one absent, one abstention.
Um, and Mr. Mr. Valley, I think we have an emergency clause, right? So is there a motion to adopt emergency clause on ordinance number thirty two?
So will.
Dr. Franklin, I think Mr. St. Columbia is seconding the motion for the mark to adopt emergency clause on ordinance number thirty two, twenty twenty one. Any questions or comments about the motion? If not, call the room.
Forward? Yes. Crockett? Etherly?
I'm sorry, abstain.
Davis?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yeah.
Four, yes, one absent, one abstention. Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. Just really quick, I'm not sure it really said, this is thirty two thousand. Five hundred and five dollars a year over five years and that's about. That's that's really less than a police officer, but it it will guarantee us. Uh, or it will prevent, Mr. Valley would agree, it would further. Limit anyway, our exposure from a liability point of view. So I think of a lot of cases since we got the the first older body cams. Where it really, it really saved us. Um. And it saved us a whole lot more than than the cost of these cameras. And so, uh, anyway, thank you for for approving that. Um, so actually, Mr. Valley, you got the next three things. I'll join you on the third one. Um, the next one being memorial signage and then the pont. So I'm just gonna let, I'm just gonna turn a gavel over you.
Okay, I I I was trying to do my agenda, but the memorial sign that you all have already. Basically, I I placed it before you two or three times. And uh, and talking to 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 some people, uh. The only thing that you all said was you ought to know what amount. And you said, put an amount in there. And so what I put, you said, you have three in there for. Uh, for the fee, it's three hundred dollars plus cost, three hundred dollars will be the application fee, which is not. Plus the cost of installation of sinus and et cetera. And so that's that's the change that I made to it. And uh, you ought to request that I put that in there. So this, that's the the amount that I've put in there was three hundred dollars.
It sounds reasonable.
Oh, it's not enough.
Okay, what do you think we need to do, Don?
I I would make it a thousand dollars and I would make it a thousand dollars because I think that the uh the entire process, as I've been on the council since consolidation. Has become something that I don't particularly care for. So my thoughts may be entirely personal when I say this. But I would like to discourage people from coming and asking their streets be named after, you know, honorary streets. I just. I I regret every single one that I voted for. And so, um. I want, if if we're gonna do it, or at least if I'm gonna do it, I'd like it to be some type of uh uh revenue uh for the city. I I think we did it in previous years and I I I made these statements, I guess, maybe last year and into this year. We never had a criteria for determining who got a street named after them. And so it became, um. Whoever had the most support. And and I just, uh, in retrospect and hindsight, I'm I'm not really for it. And uh, so um, I I think it ought to be uh more than just nominal. And I think it'll discourage people from coming and asking that we do honorary street. I mean. I I just think of an honorary street as being something that ought to be. A Hall of Fame type of uh. Uh, decision. And I always, I like to use sports analogy. Some are harder to get into than others. Uh, but uh, the the litany of reasons people have come and asked us to to do uh honorary streets have just been. Uh, somewhat disappointing to me and 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 we've approved and I I just wanna get out of the business honorary streets at this point. I'm done.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Joe St. Columbia. I'm inclined to agree with Councilman Don uh on this. I I I think it needs to be high. Uh, of course, thousand dollars certainly make it serious. It would, uh, actually, it'd be, it'd end up being two thousand when it dawned.
I I.
No, it would be. It'd be thousand dollars plus whatever the sinus costs.
Yeah.
If 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 y'all did it that way.
Yeah, I mean, it's more than gonna be more than a thousand dollars.
City attorney, it will be renewable in ten years at the same price.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, basically, by by this, the ones that you have now, they would, they would expire after they've been active for ten years.
Well, I mean.
I'm inclined to agree with Don.
Yeah, I I think we do need a process. Mr. Valley's worked hard and I think once one of the things we've talked a lot, excuse me, talked a lot about. Um, I don't have an objection to the amount. Of money myself, that's for what it's worth. I think the process is almost as important because people need, there needs to be something that we point to. And we've kind of been all over the place. It seems, or well, I say that, but we haven't really given clarity to it, let me put it that way. And I think the. Process, this gives it clarity and I don't think a thousand dollars is a deal breaker as far as I'm concerned.
I I have no objection. I just put a number in it because y'all requested it. A thousand dollars now, uh, as it relates to it. I I I don't agree from a legal standpoint, Mr. on uh the purposes that he he intimated. The purpose of 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 it would be. Uh, not necessarily for money-making. It would be for uh the costs associated with it and the process that we go through. Uh, I don't think that this is, I wanna, I wanna refute that in the sense of. That this is some type of tax or or something like that from a legal standpoint, because a third party comes back and looks and says, well, you did this for money raise revenue. But it it takes a, it is a, it is a quite involved process. It takes a lot of people to look at. And the process is 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 frustrating and I think that's what Mr. is expressing to discuss. I can't speak for him. But we've gone through this several times and it it is a quite involved process. A thousand dollars, I think, still would be reasonable. This, that's what you do because this is not a. A typical thing. It's not something that 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 has happened all over the city and it's not something that's 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 typical. Uh, I just said three hundred dollars, uh, because I thought that was reasonable, but of course. I, a thousand dollars that that make me uh 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 doesn't cause me any pause either. If if the person is that significant, I mean, that's uh, it's worth a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I agree. Well, I think we ought to put a thousand in there. And uh. I think.
Mr. Mayor, I had, I had, you go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
I was just gonna ask you how you wanted to proceed on it. Do you wanna? I'm just kind of not towards the clock. I know people are gonna start getting off at one. I mean, at eight. And I just, I know we still have a lot to do.
If the motion is, if someone moves a suspended move, place a third of final reading. With the fee, the application fee being a thousand dollars, the thousand dollars number fundable too, though, uh, that's one thing about it. Uh, with the application fee being a thousand dollars. Uh, then uh, I can, I can change that amount and give it to you tomorrow.
Well, if if we're not gonna pass it as is tonight, um, the only thing I would say is. If you're gonna pay a thousand dollars, it probably ought to be refundable or at least half of it, it seems to me. I I mean, I don't wanna waste everybody's time. Uh, and not have some kind of fee attached, but if it's not refundable and they end up not doing it, I think a thousand dollars is a little steep in that case. Because probably they wrote a check or they had to collect that money. And I don't think it should bind the planning commissioner, the council or anybody to do it, but at the same time. Um. You know, it's gonna actually make them wanna do it more because the person did pay a thousand dollars. I, if they're not gonna get their money back.
Is what which portion is not refundable, uh, not refundable? Uh, do you have a number on that, Mr. St. Columbia?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
The mayor has has paused about it being non-refundable, a thousand dollar fee.
At least the entire.
Yeah, the entire fee.
I guess my question is, under what circumstances would somebody need a refund?
Well, if they paid a thousand dollars um to apply and it was denied, you know, I think, I think it becomes steep at that point. Five hundred dollars, you know. I don't think so necessarily. I think that's probably worth the time and trouble. But if it's a thousand dollars, I have a feeling that people are gonna feel a little pressured to go ahead and approve it because they don't want the. The person involved to wasted a thousand dollars. Uh, or feel like they did. And so I kind of, you know, not sure it'll be, it'll be weighted like you're wanting it to because they're gonna say, well, I don't want the person to lose a thousand dollars. I'd ready whoever's gonna make the decision and make it based on the merits of the application and the people to be serious enough, which I think a thousand dollars guarantees that. But if they don't get what they want, you know, to me, five hundred dollars is probably ready. That's just me. I'm just speaking for me.
In in my mind, the thousand dollars was for an approved uh uh application. You know.
Okay.
The decision has been made to actually do the street change. If there's an application fee. Then what I think that should happen is that uh perhaps. Instead of having, maybe it should be separated. If you wanna get, if you, if if the thousand is to cover the cost. Then part of that may be application. So maybe you have a. Hundred, hundred and fifty dollar application fee. And then if it's approved. It goes towards the uh the balance of a thousand, which will cover the cost of um. Doing the the signage and the entire process. And if it's not approved, then the application fee is non-refundable. I guess, does that make any sense to you?
Okay, Mr. Valley, is it three hundred dollars now? I mean, I just see a blank.
Well, I'm trying to see. Oh, when I never gave you an updated one. I put three hundred dollars in my. And so, but the thing I was gonna say is that that uh. I'm fine with either way you all do it. Uh, if if you wanna say that the application fee is a three hundred dollar refund fee, but the total. Fee is the thousand dollars. And say that I can bring it back to you with that language clearly so everybody understands what we're talking about. What we're talking about.
I think that makes sense.
Okay, well, we could table next meeting and I can I can make that.
This is me.
So the thing, thing about the is total fee, thousand dollars, what you're saying, a three hundred. And I can change the pack, uh, the cost in in sections to a four, uh, six and six. This to show that the application fee is three hundred dollars non-refundable, but the total cost. Uh, I'll be worried, I'll be worried because it, because we're taking too much time to discuss it. We're not gonna pass it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Valley. I'm, you you still have a gavel, at least through the interlocal agreement, so.
What's the next thing?
Uh, the trucks, ordinance thirty.
Okay, it's competitive waving, competitive bid waiver on on the trucks.
No, no, no. This is the Pontot Arts Street. I'm 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 saying that we don't have anything back from Glee yet. We're not, we don't.
And we don't have any updated thing on that. He's, he's still doing some additional research of. So the party talks, we need to table that because we hadn't, we hadn't finished. Uh, so we need to continue to table that for two.
Okay, if there's no objection, then we'll move on to the Westside School issue. And and I'll start that and you can finish that if you don't mind. Uh, basically, there's a memo in your packet. Um, and it's regarding the process so far. Uh, on Westside School, we, Westside, what I call, I still call it Westside School, but um. Anyway, um. I would just say, they're in the, in the official packet, there are pictures. As memo states, they've gone on site several times and. There's one, the one that, the thing that really bothers me besides it being a location for crime. Um, and and the blight and all the other stuff you already know about probably. There is a hole, pretty deep hole in that building that is extremely dangerous to children running around. Um, incredibly hazardous and it's incredibly irresponsible for the property owners not to cover that hole. And we've asked them to do that several times and. So they've implemented the procedures. Having said that, I don't know that we're prepared tonight to vet on an ordinance and that's where I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Valley about what the next steps are. If you don't mind.
Oh, I don't mind. Uh, but I was trying to meet with the code enforcement about, about, I'm sorry, let me slow down. But I was trying to meet with the code enforcement about, yes, we need to send a letter to them, uh. A final letters to them regarding condemnation that, hey, we got thirty days to do. To bring this in into compliance, well, we'll be on the agenda on X day for condemnation. Uh, I'll, I'll draft that letter this week and get it, get it to them so that in the. Uh, the second meeting in December, I mean, November, we we can have something, uh. A condemnation ordinance to make sure that that if they, if they don't have it better, better by the end, we'll be going forward trying to uh deal with it on that day. Uh, because I think that according to comply with our ordinance, we have to get them notice. That you have thirty days to bring this completely in compliance or else uh we're gonna move forward. Uh, you've tried every other effort. Uh, they could ask for an extension on that day. But I think considering the efforts that you've, that you've done, unless they're trying to make substantial improvements immediately. I think it's probably would be futile. Uh, because you've, 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 you've met with them several times, done things and 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 there's nothing. Uh, that's just happening with it.
And the only thing that I would add to that is. I don't know what the, what the law says about emergencies in this case, but the the hole particularly in the ground is a pending hazard. I mean, tonight, some kid could fall in there and break its neck and and it's very dangerous and I. I think it'd be here. There's a hole there on that property on West Side. That's just left uncovered and we said something to him and. It's incredibly irresponsible and hazardous and. it's incredibly irresponsible and hazardous and I just wanna go on record saying that 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 shouldn't wait thirty days, that that should be done immediately and, uh, I mean, I I'll, I'll, I'll let Mr. Valley advise us otherwise. I just want you, I just wanted to make sure we know how imminent that that hazard is, uh, or not imminent, it's it's there right now, uh, exists right now, so. I don't know what the emergency exceptions are to the thirty days and all that. But that particular part of this property is extremely hazardous. And it's just something, it's just waiting to happen, you know, and kids run figure out all the time.
I'll give you tomorrow on that issue. I think we could take some, uh, some things sort of tear the property down to to remedy that issue that that we could do immediately, but as far as going in and doing something to make sure that 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 is covered somehow and and charged it for, to protect the public's interest. Uh, because, uh, the, we could take with me doing for emergency, but they, but in doing so, if if we can do it in a, in a manner that that, uh, is is less, uh, causes less harm to the, to to the total property. I don't see the pictures. I haven't provided pictures. So I don't know exactly the the thing that you're talking about, but uh, I think that that, uh, we probably could go in and make sure that that's covered. That's in them will be all the time that we have to do to make sure that we protect the public. Uh, to keep somebody from falling in. Uh, at some point, it becomes an attractive nuisance. And, uh, and they could be liable for for any, anything, but liability, uh, isn't what we're concerned about. We're concerned about the protection of human life. I haven't seen the whole mayor, but but I I'll try to look to you, but code enforcement tomorrow, code enforcement tomorrow to look at it.
And the pictures are in the pile too, and anyway, any questions on on those, any of those issues? Next one's gonna be the interlocal agreement. Um, so I'll be any questions so far on any of that? Okay, Mr. Mr. Valley, you wanna move on the interlocal agreement?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. This is about Newman Drive.
No, we hadn't got good on that. We gotta give them the kind of judge on on Newman Drive. We haven't done that. You were talking about the other league, uh, the the other local.
Yeah, I mean, we've got that too in here somewhere, cause you just sent it to us.
That I, that I was prepared to go forth with was the one regarding district court, which I emailed you all about, uh, about thirty days ago, excuse me. And then, uh, uh, but I I I laid out the language that would deal some financial information I was trying to get from uh, Mr. Turner relating to the overall cost of what it is, so I got a rough estimate in the contract, but that's an ordinance and it's a tax in a local agreement contract, which lays out the things that I previously emailed to you all regarding uh, the chief deputy who's salary currently forty two thousand and the deputy in the county agrees to pay one half of her salary and benefits, is my understanding. And, uh, because the mayor and I, we spoke to them, we didn't make a difference in salary and benefits, cause city pays uh, insurance and retirement in full. And we told them that, we met with them, that we pay, as a city, uh, the city pays every employee four hundred and seven dollars a month, pays that insurance without the employee contributing anything. And then they provide papers, Arkansas Public and retirement system for what's the city's portion that it contributes is a fifteen point thirty, fifteen point thirty-two percent uh, uh, of the sal- employee salary placed into retirement. And that's additional to their regular salary. The city pays basically that salary. And so those things, uh, are in this agreement. And, uh, this is where we were asking the city to adopt the ordinance, uh, which authorizes the mayor to enter to the contract. Uh, and the the ordinance and the contract both were emailed to you all, but I previously emailed you all the language, uh, which which, and we've talked about this twice. This is the third time we talked about the same thing. Uh, so the ordinance, uh, is in a local agreement with the county regarding the district court clerk staff. Nothing in this creates a contract for the district court staff, nothing in this, uh, addresses changes in the status quo is just about the financial obligations. The statute, uh, provides that they had to, they had to pay one half of the clerk's salary, and they were paying it directly to the employee, but they paid, but this contract makes them pay it to the city. And, uh, and that makes it a cleaner arrangement.
Okay, we- without further, uh, discussion, do do we have the rights, we need to suspend the rules on that, on that ordinance? I can't tell. Ms. Ramsey, can you tell? Do we have the, we have to have four, is that right, Ms. Val? Four councilmen?
I see that Davis is present, Miss, Miss Ford and Miss St. Columbia are all present.
Okay, all right, good, okay. I I miss somebody, I guess. Um, okay, so, Ms. Valley, you wanna go ahead and take that up, um, while, cause it has, we have talked about it a lot on the district court. I'll let you, I'm just gonna let you take it from there.
Yeah, the motion is to suspend the rules, place ordinance, uh, number thirty-four, twenty twenty-one on the third and final reading the title on it, and the the general consensus of it is, the general purpose of it is authorize the mayor to enter to a contract in a local agreement with the county regarding the district court, two employees and district court clerk's office. If they have motions, suspend rules are placed on third and final reading. Reading the title on it.
I shall move. Just like we may as, uh, that we may, uh, they will place when, what ordinance, I'm sorry, what's doing? Thirty-four on third and final reading, is there a second? Mr. Ellie Sagin's the motion. Any questions or comments about the motion?
Davis?
Yes.
Frank Columbia?
Yes.
Crockett?
Franklin?
Etherly?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Four yes, two absent.
Order number thirty-four, that's twenty twenty-one, is the ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter to an interlocal agreement with this county regarding the district court staff. Uh, regarding the salary of the chief, district court clerk and the clerk for the county dock. Is there a motion to adopt?
I shall move. St. Columbia moves, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis moves, pile and option, number thirty-four. Any questions or comments? If not called at all.
Etherly?
And it went, yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Crockett? Franklin? St. Columbia?
Yes.
Four yes, two absent.
Motion passes. And we don't have an emergency clause on this?
No, in fact, we have the, uh, under the local agreement, both I city attorney and the county attorney have to, have to give an opinion that this is a, this is a legitimate well, I've done so by telling you all that you all should, and the county, county attorney had to prove before the ordinance could take effect. And so, we've, we've done our part, we just had to have them do their part.
So, okay.
Oh, it goes in effect, and it is what it says, when the contract is signed, the ordinance goes in effect.
Okay.
Cause both the, it is, and the county attorney has
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Valley. And can we, can we move back up the agenda real quick before I lose people?
Yes, sir.
We, so, since I didn't really speak to this, we are gonna pass over the new, the Newman Drive interlocal agreement again, right? Because we're still waiting on the determination to be made about the lines, the legal lines and the interlocal agreement with the county and what they would do, what the city would do. And we don't have that yet, so we're gonna go ahead and move to the next thing, which is, uh, Mr. Patterson, our, our water manager, uh, which I brought up last time. And I'm gonna bring it up, uh, one more time, and his, uh, my request, uh, to give him a five thousand dollar raise is sixty-seven thousand dollars from sixty-two thousand dollars a year. And I won't belabor it, because you've heard me say it already, just to say that, um, remember when after consolidation, our general manager, we went from two to one general manager, from two commissions to no commissions, from two councils to one council, from two mayors to one mayor. That's an awful lot and, um, there weren't very many people in the general manager business who were that interested in that salary for this job, because you'd really manage in two, two distribution systems. And Mr. Patterson's done a very good job and I highly recommend his, um, his, his raise. So I, I would, like I said, we've already discussed it. I wanted to bring it up one more time. Is there a motion to approve that increase for five thousand dollars for Mr. Patterson?
I'll make, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Ms. St. Columbia moves, is there a second? Is there a second? Just make sure you're out, you're not on mute. Ms. St. Columbia made, that way you proved the rise for, uh, Mr. Patterson, his general manager of the water department from sixty-two thousand to sixty-seven. Can you ask one more time, there's a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis, second in the motion. Uh, any discussion on the motion or questions? If not, if not called at all.
Davis?
Yes.
Frank Columbia?
Yes.
Crockett? Franklin? Etherly? Forward?
Abstain.
I have two yes, three absent, one abstention.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, again, um, so I'm gonna move quickly, cause I, I wanna I wanna try, we have so many things to do, to be quite honest with you. So I guess what we'll do is we'll just go to the next thing, the next two things, and then we'll try to, we'll try to finish up a resolution for two police trucks and three more Skycop pole cameras. Uh, and a USDA grant. Chief Smith, you still on board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're running out of time and, uh, so, but I wanted to, I wanna recognize you on that, and then we'll do the incentive pay, and then that's probably gonna be the best we can do tonight.
Okay.
But anyway, go ahead and, so basically, the resolution is to support a grant application to USDA rule development for two police trucks and three more Skycop, Skycop pole cams. Um, and the resolution is in your packet.
Okay, um, on the Skycop cam, we, we've actually had three phases in the Skycop cam program. Uh, our first phase, as we already know, we have two Skycop cams on Cherry Street. We also have a trailer that gives us a total of three in phase one. Phase two, tomorrow, they are delivering the Skycop trailer uh, with the gunshot recognition and tag reader, which will be here tomorrow at nine, nine thirty. Uh, after that, we'll be going through our training to train on the system of utilizing the tag reader into gunshot recognition. There's three more pole cams are coming. Uh, we're looking at, we're anticipating sometime the latter part of next week. So we've already get, getting those, uh, they in process of, of getting shipped here and put up on the poles. That would give us a total of four in phase two, which gives us a, a composite total of seven uh, Skycop cams, two trailers and five, uh, cameras. In phase three, we asked the, uh, we obtained a forty-eight thousand dollar USDA grant that I was able to, uh, get for actually three more pole cams with the gunshot recognition and um, tag readers. And we also added, because in the, in the first proposal for new police vehicles, we had actually ten vehicles that is coming. They're actually have made it, they just outfitting them right now. Dana, uh, Safety is outfitting them with the lights and all the the bells and whistles for that. Uh, we asked for two trucks in this grant. We asked for uh, two, um, utility vehicles or well, more of two pickup trucks along with three Skycop grants, which we got a forty-eight thousand dollars USDA grant, which the matching for it is actually one hundred and twenty-two thousand on the contribution of the city side. Um, with the Skycop cams, if we go with phase one and two and three, that'd give us a total of ten Skycop cams. Uh, my goal is to get in our next phase, I'm working on a grant now, to actually get six to ten more Skycop cams throughout the city. My total goal is to actually get between forty to fifty Skycop cams in the city. That's the total goal. Right now, Oceola, Arkansas, with a population of sixty-five hundred people, they've actually got thirty-six Skycop cams, so I'm very competitive. I want our city to have more throughout the whole city. So what I'm asking the city council to look at, uh, adopting or passing a resolution to get the matching money of one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for those, you, those pickup trucks. And also the three Skycop cam, pole cams with the guns to shot recognition, also tag readers as well. Uh, with that being said, anybody have any questions?
Go ahead, anybody, any questions for Chief Smith? So what, um, and I'll be honest, I don't see the resolution. What we need for the grant application is a resolution that the city will support that.
I didn't see it in our packets.
It was near, it was near the back. It's just a paper formality, that we need to know how many vote yes and no and are absent.
Is there a motion on, we're kind of, keep my eye on the clock. We can ask questions, still ask questions, but is there a motion to adopt resolution? Three additional Skycops, two police trucks, and the city's match for that to send to USDA.
I'll make a motion, yes.
Ms. St. Columbia moves, adoption of the resolution uh, supporting the USDA grant application. Uh, is there a second? Is there a second on the resolution? Davis, second's the motion. Any other questions or comments about the motion to adopt the resolution? What, is there a resolution number?
Thirteen. Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not called at all.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Crockett? Forward? Etherly? Davis?
Yes.
Franklin? I have two yes and four absent.
I think Ethel Ford said yes, didn't she?
I responded yes.
Oh, okay, I have three yes.
On a resolution, you can play my yes, can't you?
Yes, that's great.
So go ahead and add my yes, that'll get you.
Four yes, uh-huh.
Thank, thank you, Chief Smith. I think, uh, and and again, I'm open to suggestions, but I promise to try and keep this till eight o'clock. The, uh, some of these issues, we wouldn't be able to take action on right now anyway. Uh, so we'll move to the top of the next agenda unless there's, unless you wanna take them up, but I don't see that we have not sure we have the votes to suspend the rules to pass any of these things except for resolutions. Um, the Memorial Day, we, we still have time to do the Memorial Day for Officer Wallace uh, and designation on the highway resolution, which is the same resolution. Um, we can maybe accept, take your questions about the, uh, incentive pay. Uh, the fire hydrant inspection report, uh, Ms. Helen just, uh, and I didn't get it to her till late, so my apologies, but she did successfully get it to you all in your email to but she did successfully get it to y'all in your email to review. Um, and it's pretty much three with Helena and they're working in West Helena, but you can see that on the map. And, uh, we'll just move these on. Like I said, unless there's an object, an objection, we'll move these on to the next regular agenda accordingly. But, uh, if y'all don't wanna do that, that's fine with me. But I don't think we have the numbers we need to get the work done, so.
We don't.
Not hearing any objection. Is there a motion to adjourn, adjourn?
I shall move.
St. Columbia moves, adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Davis seconds the motion. Uh, just, um, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank y'all very much and we'll move the next, uh, move these items in the same order to the next agenda. And if y'all have any questions in the meantime, uh, let us know. Thank you. And as questions you already asked, we'll try to get you interested. Thank y'all. Thank you for those to join us and y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.